Welcome to the July 24, 2024 zoning board of appeal meeting. Please stand for the first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. And there is not here tonight the chair. I am vice chair and I'll be taking reading this evening. Mr. Bowman. Exits in case of emergency, one here, one behind you. Use either one if we need to, we don't suspect it will be. So we have new business. It's a motion to consider a rehearing of Gleason 2024-09Z pursuant to town law 267-A12. I'd like to start with our attorney, who has a couple of things to say about that first.
This came without, by the way, a request to the court's documents from the neighbors, the sofas, who believe that the addition would cause additional runoff to their property should the variance be granted. The board is considering a motion to rehear the application that would essentially restart the process, hoping we would hold a new public hearing. And for the rehearing to go forward, there would need to be a unanimous affirmative vote by the members present here tonight. Is there anyone from sofas, a sofa here to speak on the request?
Nothing to say, I think it speaks for itself. Pete Andrews.
Okay. Would you like to explain anything about the nature of the request or what the contention is?
Well, the plans that were used to grant the variance show an increase in runoff onto the property of 41 South Cross Road from the roof line.
And that just reminded that application was for a rear yard setback going down from T 50 that is allowed to about 25 feet from the rear.
Okay. We need to take a vote, Madam Secretary.
Okay, so this is about whether.
Well, if someone liked to make a motion on whether or not to hold the rehearing.
Schedule a rehearing for Gleason.
Oh yeah, the motion first.
Yes. We have a motion to schedule a rehearing for Gleason for August 28 to 2024.
Jerry, sorry, just from, are you making that motion?
Yes, I am. Director.
Okay. Nat Roke, Mr. Agarwal.
This is to reheare, correct?
Yes, whether or not to reheare the application.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Donnelly.
No.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Bowman.
No.
Okay, so the motion did not pass, so there is no rehearing, the resolution stays.
We have a new public hearing. This is Asai, number 2024-10Z, 5 St. Andrews Road, Hyde Park, grid number 6164-03-021198. Owners are Asai Shuzu International Company, applicant to Asai USA, representative is Jocelyn Hayward. Area variance, section 108-5-15, bulk regulations in the corridor business district to permit a height of 30 feet for two flag poles where 22 feet is the maximum height permitted. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on July 17, 2024.
Thank you. A motion, please, to open the new public hearing for Asai.
motion.
Second. All those in.
All in favor.
All in favor, yes.
Aye.
Opposed? May I, is applicant here? Could you come up?
Should I sit or stand, what's the?
Whatever you feel comfortable.
Okay.
Please state your name.
Jocelyn Hayward.
And give us a little summary again of what the request is.
Basically, we're just looking to install two flag poles, one of the US flag and one of the Japan flag in front of our tasting room. But in order for it to kind of look appropriate to our building scale, we'd like to have it be over the 22 feet, about 30 feet, but planning to just use aluminum poles and then have them be the, you know, appropriate flag size, but just to kind of really represent, you know, just have the more national representation for both Japan and the US of Dasai Blue's, you know, spot in Hyde Park and in the United States.
And they aren't by the road, they're by the building?
Yeah, so it's gonna be like right in front of our tasting room, so like you have to go through the parking lot and then right before you enter the actual tasting room, they're gonna be on that sidewalk in front.
Which building is the tasting room?
The main building, the stuff, the former supermarket, yeah. So all there, right in front.
That grassy area?
Yeah, so we're like. The tasting, the tasting will be to the left. We kind of have like a grassy area. We have a bench there, it's gonna be kind of around that area. So you know, you'd be looking straight into the tasting room, it'd be to your left, right in front, but kind of in the little grassy area.
Any other comments from the board or questions? Any, any public comment, anybody in the public have anything to say? Could you state your name and address to the record?
Jocelyn Hayward. I'm here representing Dasai USA Inc., 5 St. Andrews Road, Hyde Park, New York, 12538.
A motion to close the public hearing.
motion.
All in favor?
Need a second.
Second.
So you have a motion from Jim to be back second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We need.
Hilton versus Hilton, opposed.
Hope for your. Sure. Resolution to grant area variance, Asai Shuzu International Company, 5 St. Andrews Road, Hyde Park, New York, July 24, 2024, resolution number 2024-10Z. Whereas applicant, Asai USA Incorporated, on behalf of owner, Asai Shuzu International Company, has submitted an application for an area variance to allow the installation of two flag poles, project at 5 St. Andrews Road, Hyde Park, New York, identified as tax parcel number 1 through 3, 200-6164-03-021198, in the corridor business district and the site end. Whereas the project is depicted on the site plan entitled New Saki Bakery Plan, whereas applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108-5 dot 15 to allow maximum height of two flag poles of 30 feet where a height of 22 feet is allowed. Whereas pursuant to section 2 through 9- M of the general municipal law, the project was referred to the Justice County Department of Flooring and Development, which responded by letter dated July 16, 2024. The project was a matter of local concern and commented that the applicant should ensure the flag displayed conforms to the United States Flag Quote Regulations. And whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-33 dot 6B2 regarding the requested variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The applicant seeks to install two flags which will be used to display the flags of the United States of America and Japan. The flag poles will be located to the interior of the property near the Saki Brewery Building. The installation of the flag poles will not result in a change to the character of the neighborhood nor will affect nearby properties. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than this area variance. The applicant seeks to display the flags at a height which is higher than the roof line of the building. The requested variance will allow the flag poles to clear the top of the building. Three, the zoning board of appeals is required to grant a minimum variance necessary, while the requested variance may be considered numerically substantial, allowing a height of 30 feet where 22 feet is the maximum height permitted, requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to allow the flag to be displayed above the roof line of the building. Four, the requested variance will not have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the general neighborhood or district. The flag poles will be installed on the corner of the property near the Saki Brewery Building and will have no physical or environmental effect on the conditions of the neighborhood or district. Five, the difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a requested variance subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to section 108-33 dot 5 F1, authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise it will be revoked. Two, panic of all fees and escrow.
A second motion with an explanation why I oppose closing the open, uh, the public hearing. And that is that, especially during the summer and holidays, I'd like to see all these projects go at least two public hearings to give people the opportunity, if they're out of town or busy or something's going on, to come and speak.
Anything else? Madam Secretary, do you have a vote on these?
Yes. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowman?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.
Awesome, guys, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Next item is Schmidt, number 23-17Z, 7 Green Bush Drive, Poughkeepsie, grid number Owners Kevin and Crystal Schmidt, applicant Kevin Schmidt. Area variances, section 108-5-115, bulk regulations in the neighborhood district to allow a side yard setback of 2 feet 9 inches where 20 feet is required and to allow a height of 22 feet 6 inches where 22 feet is the maximum height permitted for the construction of a new garage associated with a single family dwelling. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, it was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on July 17, 2024.
May I have a, may I have a motion to open the new public hearing for Schmidt?
motion.
May I have a second?
second.
All in favor?
aye.
Opposed?
No.
You're opposing? Okay. All right. Boy, I'll pose close. Good for you. And anybody here from? Hello.
Hello.
Please state your name.
Kevin Schmidt, 7 Green Bush Drive.
Okay. And briefly, you kind of have the idea, give us an idea about, you know, the project.
So the driveway is pretty much, you know, two and a half feet from the property line in front of setback behind the house. So the neighbor's property, there was a garage there previously and then it fell down. So we want to put basically on where that garage was and then go back further. And then the height, because if I put a car to lift in it, I need the height. And then it's gonna have a two second story loft in it as well. So it's, it's close to the property line because what the driveway is, all those houses were built tight. 9 Green Bush was actually squeezed in between 7 and 11 after they were rebuilt, so houses are really tight there.
And it's my understanding you further limited the size of the structure from what was originally composed?
I've shrank down multiple times now. I was gonna add it, I wanted 24 by 52, we shrunk it down four feet that way. And then the height, I could come down on height if needed. If I do the 16 foot walls and then I'd have to be, we'd make it under 22 feet.
So can we just clarify, are you, are you going to be limiting the height or are you requesting the?
I would like, I would like the height, but if.
Didn't, didn't we talk very briefly about height of your house against the, what was the house?
I believe the house is 20, maybe 21 feet or something like that.
And could you accomplish what you need to accomplish with the more limited height?
Yeah, just be changing from crosses to conventional framing to do the second story part.
And that would go from the, it would be a height of 16 feet?
Yeah. So, oh.
The wall height of.
Wall height 16 with the peak.
And the roof line would be where?
So you have 10 feet per floor, basically is the rule of thumb. So if you have the bottom floor, you know, between nine feet and then you have the framing and then another nine feet, that's where you get the 20 feet from. You know, it's hard to do a two-story building under 22 feet in some ways.
So were you gonna be able to make the 20 feet on height by changing the walls?
Under the 22 feet.
I'd be under the 22 feet with the peak at the 18, because I'm only, I'm only six inches over with 18 foot, so if I drop two feet, it's gonna drop the framing two feet, so it'd be 20 and a half feet.
Can I get some?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that you and the board are aware that this has not gone through the building department yet. I do not know what slopes are required on the roof for snow and I don't know what the building code requirement is from the property line. So your variances would only apply to zoning.
Right, right, so this, this is a variance from the Hyde Park Town Code. If the building department determines that you will need an additional variance from the state, under the state building code, you may still need to apply for that as well.
Any other comments?
Well, I think we just need to nail down, what is your request? Is the request at the 16 foot wall height or the original request? Which is to the height of the 20?
Variance says what? 20 feet, 26 inches.
23, 6 inches is what I need for the height. And then I need the two, two feet 9 inches for the property line to build it. So it goes down, you drive down the driveway and then I'm tucking it behind the house as it is.
Right, so, so this resolution should not complete the height variance because we had an email from you stating that you were limiting the height further.
Correct.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, the height is under.
Yes, need the height. No, no, I just need the side yard.
If you drop the wall by two feet.
Yeah.
Doesn't the height go down by two feet?
Yeah.
So about 20 to 9 would be 18 now, or 20 foot time.
20.
Below the, the original variance.
20 and a half for the height, it's two feet 9 inches from the side yard.
Right, that's the side yard.
That's the side yard.
It's.
My thing with height.
The height's out.
Height's out.
Because I'm gonna drop the wall.
He already accommodated us and reduced it so it doesn't have that.
We were confused.
Okay.
I got you. As long as we're all square.
Okay, no other comments. Any, any public comment? State your name and your question, please.
Kevin Schmidt, 7 Green Bush Drive, Hyde Park, New York, 12601, Poughkeepsie, New York.
Thank you. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
motion.
Second.
second.
All in favor? Opposed?
opposed.
Opposed, okay. May I have Mr. Agarwal?
Sure. Resolution to grant area variance, Kevin Schmidt, 7 Green Bush Drive, Poughkeepsie, New York, 12601. David, July 24, 2024, resolution 23-17Z. Whereas the applicant Kevin Schmidt, the property owner, has submitted an application for an area variance to change the side yard setback for the construction of a garage associated with a single family dwelling at property located at 7 Green Bush Drive, Poughkeepsie, in the town of Hyde Park, New York, 12601, identified as tax parcel number 6163-04-510451,括号, zero, in the neighborhood district. Whereas the project is depicted on a plan entitled Quotation for Kevin Schmidt, prepared by Whitetail Construction LLC in June 7, 2024, will be advised to reflect a proposed 16 foot wall height plan. And whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning law section 108-5.15, bulk regulations to allow a side yard setback of 2 foot 9 inches where 20 foot is required, the requested variance. And whereas pursuant to New York or 6 New York C Y R, C R R 617 dash or .5 C 17, yeah, short. A granting of area variance for a single family, two family, or three family residence as a type 2 action under, under secret. There was a duly, whereas a public, duly known public hearing was held on July 24 of this year. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved, the zoning board of appeals based the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the town law and Hyde Park zoning law section 108-33 point 6B2 requesting, regarding the requested variance. Point 1, the requested variance will not produce a desirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby property. The construction of the new garage will allow for the storage of an automobile as well as other equipment now stored either in the open or in multiple accessory structures or sheds. Point 2, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. The proposed location is the only space available on the narrow 8 foot lot. A septic field takes up a large portion of the rear yard, rear yard, preventing the applicant, preventing the applicant from relocating the proposed structure further to the interior of the yard. Moreover, the requested, the proposed location is logically located at the end of the existing driveway. Point 3, the requested variance may be considered numerically substantial. The variance is substantial but reflects the narrow lot and limited options for location of garage charter. Further, the applicant has agreed to reduce the height for the proposed garage. Four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood. The construction of the new garage will improve the physical appearance of the lot as well as the neighborhood. The other lots in the immediate vicinity are also narrow and require structures closer than the normal side setbacks. There will be no substantial environmental impact resulting with the new garage. Point 6, the difficulties are self-created because the applicant took ownership of the property as is, with full knowledge of the location of the existing house and the narrow makeup of the lot. Be it further resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. One, pursuant to section 108-33 point 5 F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance, otherwise, otherwise it is revoked. Two, payment of all fees and escrow.
Is there a second motion?
A second. I have a quick question. Impact hammer? Do you have one? Jack hammer? Yeah. No, for like taking the wheels off and blowing that.
Yeah.
You can do that with door closed?
Yeah. It's gonna be fully insulated and sound definitely because, yeah, being a metal building, we're gonna get, first thing is gonna be building.
Cause that'll ring.
Yeah, battery stuff doesn't make as much noise, actually.
Oh, good.
Everything's battery now, you don't even use air.
Oh, yeah, the air is part of it.
You know, the air, a hammer's really made a lot of noise, but the, I don't do a lot of work on cars anymore. I, I like tinkering with things, like building little things, so, but. And started doing it in the front yard at midnight.
Roke, please.
Yes, Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly? Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowman?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item, Zunio, number 24-05Z, Madison Avenue, Poughkeepsie, grid number 6163-02-50677. Owners Damien Zunio, Monica Zunio, Pablo Zunio, and Mora Morocco, applicant, all terms PE. Area variance, section 108-5 inch 15 in the neighborhood district, to allow a front yard setback of 3.5 feet where 50 feet is required for a rebuilt front porch and to permit a side yard setback of 6 feet where 10 feet is required for an arbor in the rear yard. Madam Secretary, was the public hearing notice published?
Yes, in the Poughkeepsie Journal on July 17, 2024.
May I have a motion to open the new public hearing for Zunio?
motion.
second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? May, please state your name.
I'm Paul Tierms, engineer at Project, thank you.
My name is Monica Washington, I represent the entire family.
Thank you. Can you give us a little summary of what you're proposing?
Sure. Monique, our family purchased the house about two years ago. They have made, you know, a lot of improvements on the house, you know, fixing up the interior. The front porch and the back porch were in poor condition, so they rebuilt those. The existing house is non, existing non-conforming. The arbor in question, as the second part of the variance, was pre-existing when they purchased the house, not something that they went and put up as a desirable, you know, accessory structure.
Yeah, that, please.
It's kind of simple.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
Comments? Any, any public comments? I need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion. A second?
second.
All those in favor? Aye.
opposed?
Opposed.
Rich, since you're opposing, would you also read, read the.
Whereas the applicants, Damien, Monica, Pablo, and Mora, the property owners, have submitted an application for the area variance to change the front yard setback for a rebuilt front porch and to change the side yard setback for the harbor in the rear yard at a property located at 4 Madison Avenue, Poughkeepsie, in the town of Hyde Park, New York, 12601, identified as tax parcel number 1332006163025067750000 in the neighborhood district. Whereas the project depicted on a plan titled Site Plan for Deck Reconstruction prepared by Paul Tierms PE dated May 22, 2024. Whereas the applicant seek area variance from zoning law section 108, 5 dash 15, bulk regulations to allow a front yard setback of 3.5 feet where 50 feet is required for a rebuilt front porch and to permit, and to permit a side yard setback of 6 feet where 10 feet is required for an arbor in. where 10 feet is required for an arbor in the rear yard. Whereas pursuant to 6 New York C R R 617 dot 5C 17, the granting of an area variance for a single-family, two-family, three-family with type 2 action under the state requirement code and is not subject to review yet. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings in accordance with section 267-B of the Town Law and Hyde Park Zoning Law, section 108-33 dot 6B2, regards the following variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Reconstruction of the front porch with the addition of a new roof will improve the character of the house and thus the neighborhood. The existing arbor located in the rear of the house likewise does not change the character of the neighborhood. And it was mentioned that it was existing. Benefit sought by the applicants cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicants to pursue other than an area variance. The reconstruction of the existing front porch reflects the construction of the original house built in 1948. When the required setbacks were different, the property is a pre-existing, non-conforming, and the new construction will not further encroach on the existing setbacks of the property. The requested variance may be considered numerically substantial. The variances are numerically substantial but are reasonable given the pre-existing, non-conforming nature of the property. The requested variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the general neighborhood or district. The porch will be rebuilt and improved in the existing location and will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Likewise, the existing arbor improves the appearance of the house and has no effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. The difficulties are self-created. Be it further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions. Pursuant to section 108-33 dot 5F1, the authorized activity must commence within one year from the date of issuance. Otherwise, it is revoked. Payments of all fees and escrowes.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. May I have a second on the motion, please?
Second.
Madam Secretary, may I have a poll?
Yes, Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
I'll send the downstairs. I'll send the building permit back downstairs.
Okay. Okay. Any other business? Well, we've got one more, though. We have to sit there. Okay. May I motion, may I motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Come on, we'll watch. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Rich, you can stay here.
That's May Wednesday, August 28, 2024. Good evening and good night.